Okay, we call to order the Roseville Commissioners Work Session. This is August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Just want to welcome everybody's in attendance tonight. Thank you, uh, thank you for coming out. I really do. Um, a couple items before we get into the work session, uh, we need consideration of agenda. Everybody's got the agenda in front of you. Any comments, concerns with agenda, or I will entertain a motion to move forward?
So moved?
Second.
All right, got a motion second. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. Sounds like ayes do have it. Motion pass. Um, consideration consent agenda. Only one item's on the consent agenda resolution for Sergeant Marty Barnes to receive his service. Well, I think it was a little right up in there, uh, in the agenda package for that. So, um, we will consider that. So, uh, I will entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All right, got a motion second. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
Um, not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like ayes have it. Ayes do have it. Motion approved. So, thank you. All right. We are ready to move on to the main, uh, main topic. Before I do, I just want to make, uh, I guess, uh, announcement for the, for the nine eleven honor and remembrance ceremony that's coming up on nine eleven. It'll be at six P M. Um, kind of excited about having that in town for the first time. So, um, hope everybody can come out. It should be a good event. Just want to describe a little bit, kind of what's going on. The location will be at the Roseville Elementary School. Um, so join Joe Grimm and Towne Roseville as we come together to honor the lives lost on September eleventh, two thousand and one, and to recognize the courage of all the first responders and countless others who make sacrifices on that day. The community event is a time of reflection, unity, and education. It serves not only as a moment to remember those that we lost, but also as opportunity to raise awareness among the younger generations about the significance of nine eleven and its lasting impact on our nation. The ceremony was include remarks from local leaders and first responders, a flag presentation, uh, procession by bagpipers, uh, live music from the band Loose Change, uh, community youth participation, a display of large steel beam from the North Tower of the, of the World Center, and giveaways, raffles, and auction. So, it is an invitation for all residents who are invited to attend and participate as we honor the leg- legacy, legacy of those who perished and reconfirm our commitment to the community and service. A special recognition of Wake County Two Hundred Club for the continued support of families of fallen first responders, which I think that's a good organization, too. So, um, thank you, Christina, for, you know, um, kind of putting this little summary together. We want to have some news blasts going out on that, too, but put, uh, put nine eleven on your calendar. I know it's in your minds already, but put it on your calendar and come out and support that event. So, thank you. Any comments on that?
Uh, sir, this year, March, year twenty-five.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Next year would be twenty-five. So, next year-
Yes, sir, twenty-six.
Next year, we hope to have even bigger.
Yeah.
Because that's the, that's the twenty-fifth anniversary.
That is awesome.
Sort of a pre-early. Good thing, I want to thank the staff, Eric, others, that's kind of, um, you know, the clerk, Christina, others that kind of worked together to make, you know. Also, I think Stephen's been involved in this, too. So, thank y'all, all of y'all putting this together. It's going to be a great event, I think. Uh, only, only concern we even, we even have has to do with, uh, the weather. You know, I think hurricane season kicks off September first, so hopefully we not have a, something to come in to disrupt that. So, thank you very much. Um, and we will now move into the meat of the work session. Affordable Housing Project, R F P, um, is, is three applicants that, um, we've kind of got as our finalists, which is True Homes, the Hertz Foundation, and Habitat for Humanity. And, um, I see, uh, I see, Michael, you getting up, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, introduce all the guests, and, uh, and kind of go from there, however you want to do this thing.
I was just gonna help him set up, but I think the town manager might want to- Sure, I can, I can, um, I can lead in, um, while he helps set up. So, the item on the agenda is regarding the town's interest in exploring options for an affordable housing project on the town-owned property that's behind Town Hall. Um, three organizations are represented here tonight, all of whom responded to the recent R F P to build affordable housing on the property. Um, one of those is True Homes, the other is the Hurt Foundation, and then, um, lastly, the Habitat for, Habitat for Humanity. You'll find those proposals in your packets. Now, the town board heard a presentation from Habitat from Humanity at the July first Town Board meeting. Tonight, we'll hear from the other two. This is an opportunity for the town board to listen and ask questions, after which staff at a later date will follow up to seek direction from the board on, um, the project.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Ron Staley. I'm with True Homes. I'm actually with the True Homes Foundation. Uh, I want to thank you guys with the opportunity, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and team council members. Uh, I'm here today to talk about repurposing some land that you guys own, uh, and bringing it towards homeownership opportunities. Just to tell you a little bit about who we are at True Homes. Sorry. I'm used to a clicker. So, True Homes is the largest private building in the Carolinas. Uh, we serve as five markets across the Carolina markets. One of them is the Triangle Market, which we're here now. Uh, we currently have subdivisions that we've built in Windo, North Carolina. We currently have active subdivisions that we're building in Flowers Plantation. We currently build five hundred homes in this market. We also build in the Triad Market, which is Winston-Salem, Charlotte and Surroundings, Wilmington and Charleston as well. So, we build twenty-five-hundred homes a year. So, as part of the owners tithing back toward the communities that we serve, we're going to, uh, do ten percent of the volume towards affordable housing. That's homeownership. So, ten percent homeownership opportunity. So, what that means for the Triangle Market is that every year, or as, as big as we grow, I'm going to be doing ten percent of the volume in this market at cost. So, and we do not need any subsidies. So, we'll be selling at cost. Um, we got many accolades. You can see, we're actually a National Builder of the Year in two thousand and twenty. Uh, we're always recognized as the best place to work in Charlotte, eighth year in a row. Uh, founded in two thousand, two thousand and seven. Again, we're the thirty-fifth largest builder, but the largest private builder in the Carolinas, and that's what makes us unique. We couldn't be a public company and do something like this. You couldn't ask a D R Horton or Orion Homes to tell its shareholders that they wanted to do something for free for their community. So, that's what makes us unique. We have two founders, and that's their tithing back to the communities that we serve. So, this is an example of the initial rendering that we put together of the property in question. Uh, we were able to fit thirty-eight single-family homes on this, on this parcel land, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths with garages. And this, in this option I'm sharing with you, it's purely for families and homeownership. All of these homes are three-bedroom and two-and-a-half baths. And you'll see later how we're going to be layering this down to get from an eighty percent A M I number down as low as sixty-five percent A M I homeownership. This is the second rendering that I prepared. Uh, I heard the need to the community. I've heard, read a lot of things about Roseville, and, you know, senior housing kept coming up. So, we do actually have a product that's a two-bedroom product that's called the Cottage, that we did a fit study to share with you this evening as well, where, where we'll be doing twenty single, twenty, uh, townhomes, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths, and twenty two-bedrooms and two-and-a-half-bath cottages. And that'll address the senior needs. So, fifty-five enough is the focus there. Uh, and you'll see later how we'll control that through deed restrictions. So, who is workforce housing? I looked at some numbers today. You know, the middle school teacher here makes about fifty-seven thousand dollars a year. You know, and when you look at the next chart, you'll see that, when you look at Wake County's A M I, that's nowhere near where they say this person's supposed to be making. You know, you look at the healthcare worker making sixty thousand a year. You look at the nonprofit manager making sixty thousand a year. So, this is Wake County's A M I for two thousand and twenty-five that came out earlier this year. So, our focus is eighty percent A M I or below homeownership. So, you can see here that family of four, uh, at eighty percent A M I, is supposed to be making a hundred and six thousand dollars a year based upon Wake County's HUD and A M I numbers. But I don't see that happening. You know, I don't see the community heroes making these salaries, these firefighters, these police officers, the nurses, the community partners, the healthcare workers. They're not making this. So, we're trying to provide opportunities for our community heroes that work and serve in our communities that can't afford to live in our community. So, here's how we're doing it. Uh, if you look at the two-bedroom cottage, you can see that we can retail this in this market today for three hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, in consideration for our proposal, we've requested that Roseville give us the land for one dollar. Uh, we've done a similar situation like this in Charlotte as well, where the city of Charlotte gave us, uh, land for one dollar, and we were able to deliver townhomes at an old economy insight that was drug-infested prostitution. We're going to be delivering forty-five townhomes in the city of Charlotte for under two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, in this example, I'm showing what we can retail it for, for the consideration of a dollar value from the city of Roseville. Uh, sorry. Yeah, no problem. Yeah. So, you'll see how we're getting there. So, first layer, you see, we can retail this for three hundred and ten thousand dollars. The next layer is Roseville's contribution to land for a dollar. The next layer is twenty-two thousand five hundred, where we're foregoing our profit. So, right here, we're getting to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this cottage unit. And that's that two-bedroom unit. So, when you look at the math, that's a payment of nineteen, twenty a month based on the Wake County A M I. So, that's, that's the two hundred and sixty thousand, seventy percent A M I. So, we're able to get down that low with the two-bedroom cottage. And we can further layer this down with Wake County's Down Payment Assistance, uh, North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. And we got some unique relationship with lenders that had some additional layering. So, with First National Bank, we can add additional fifteen thousand dollars. And from here, you can see, we can get down to homeownership into this unit as low as a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, with the opportunity to even add more with more down payment assistance. So, we're very creative with these strategies in Charlotte. And just to give you an example, I got one C M S teacher in Charlotte. The base price of a house is two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We've layered it down to a hundred thousand dollar mortgage. And that's the only way this teacher's been able to get in this house. Uh, it's the math, not mathing with A M Is. You know, really, our community heroes are not making these salaries as the A M I goes up. So, in the sex, the second unit is our MICA twenty units. That's the three-bedroom, two-and-a-half townhome. Uh, we could retail that for three hundred and fifty-four. Again, the land contribution is twenty-seven-five. You know, our profit on that would be twenty-six five hundred. So, that gives us a net amount of three hundred thousand dollars net price before any further down payment assistance. So, that gives us a two thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollar a month payment at seventy percent A M I based on Wake County numbers. So, when we further layer in the down payment assistance, as you can see below, we're able to get down to a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar mortgage on this. Uh, and we can even get down even further. But this gets us down to sixty-five percent A M I, and that payment down to sixteen sixty-four a month, including H O A fees. So, what would this yield for the community of Roseville? These forty homes would, would equate to about fifty-two thousand dollars of Roseville and True Foundation and give-back toward providing opportunities for homeowners. Um, and you saw that in the previous slide. So, that's total two point one million dollars worth of give-back that the town and the True Homes Foundation will be giving back to build these forty units. Uh, if you think about the market, the market's not moving extremely fast, uh, moving four to five percent a year in this market. So, if this person were to stay in this home for fifteen years, they would have four hundred thousand dollars in equity. You know, what would that do for a teacher who can't save money for a four-one K because they're barely making ends meet? They now have an opportunity for retirement. They now have money to send a kid, kid to school. So, how do we do that? We do that through deed restrictions. Our Go Rich Prosperity program is managed through deed restrictions. So, because we don't want investors coming in, purchasing these properties and flipping them. So, we ensure that, number one, they're a first-time homebuyer. Number two, that they meet the eligibility requirements of eighty percent A M I or below. We do go up to a hundred and ten percent A M I because we realize housing isn't even available at the hundred and ten percent A M I level. Um, and so, we put that deed restriction on for seven or fifteen years. For example, if we did a seven-year deed restriction, they get the annual benefit to sell that house what we sold it for, for them, for them, for three percent a year. So, for example, on that previous slide, you see that the net price was three hundred thousand dollars, okay? For the, every seven, every year of the seven years, they can sell it for three percent more. Because we don't want them selling the next day and flipping these houses. You know, we want, the whole goal of this is to create generational wealth. So, by putting these deed restrictions on these properties, we allow this, allow these people to come in and purchase homes and create generational wealth. This is an example of our two-bedroom cottage. Uh, it's all on one level. You'll see two bedrooms in the rear, open living dining room, uh, shared bathroom, uh, dining area and great room. This is a photo of one of our MICA elevation. This is a, got three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home. And you see, on the first floor, you see where it has the garage. Next floor, the great room, uh, nook, kitchen, open living area again, three bedrooms and two bathrooms on the next floor. Uh, that's my presentation. You guys have any questions or that I can answer?
So, what, what do you, I, I know you men- mentioned a couple times, interest rates, you know, interest rates plays a big part to this, right? And the interest rates now is what?
Six point seven five.
If they come down, this will just make it much more affordable, right?
That's correct. But the prices won't change. It'll be someone making less money will have the opportunity to buy that house. So.
So, that fifteen hundred or whatever it was you had, per month, you had up there, if interest rates come down, that'll come down.
That'll come down. Yes, sir. I'll try to go back to that slide.
So, are there any, um, protection, um, if the appreciation rates fall?
Um, I've looked at this market, and for the last thirty years, there's only been an appreciating, uh, type of system that we're in. You know, there's more people moving here than leaving here just because of the climate. You know, you got northerners moving here. You even got southerners moving from Florida here because of the climate. Uh, I don't think in the next thirty years, uh, we'll have a problem of depreciation.
So, were you, were you doing this five years ago prior to all the craziness and COVID and stuff? So, just for, I guess, my reference, the fifteen hundred a month that looks like you have to pay now, what was that five years ago?
Oh, man, we were, it was a different environment before COVID. Um, building materials were a lot different. Cost was a lot different. I mean-
We talking about less than a thousand dollars probably, or?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, a three hundred thousand dollar house, we would have been like two-twenty-five, the same house before COVID. But COVID bought that much, uh, you know, between interest rates and cost of materials.
Yeah. Because to me, I, I, you know, I think fifteen hundred is, is not affordable for a lot of people still, you know? There's a lot of people I know still, they can't, they can't make a fifteen hundred dollar a month payment.
This, I'm doing it based on Wake County's area median income. That's what I was talking about, is the math, not mathing.
No.
You know?
And this, this is kind of based on the seventy percent M I?
Six point seven five, yes, sir. And the H O A, so we'll ensure that the property remains beautiful, and exterior of the units, the roof, all that stuff is maintained. So, that homeowner will only have to worry about the interior of the unit.
So, you talk about deed restrictions, and I think, say, somewhere between seven and fifteen years. So, once those deed restrictions are over, whoever owns it can sell it for fair market value.
That's correct.
So, at that point, the contribution that the town's given for affordable housing is gone.
It's-
So, we've got seven to fifteen years, or one generation, if you will, that benefits from this, and then it's just regular housing.
Uh, we can go fifteen years, we can go twenty years, depending on what the town desires. Uh, but at the main point, the, our program is very unique. It's not like other programs. We want to promote upward mobility. We want to promote generational wealth. And I don't know about you guys, there's not too many people that stay in homes for thirty years anymore. And we don't want to restrict them and say you have to stay in thirty years just to be able to retire and equate, get all that equity, to be able to move, you know, a smaller downsized, uh, move in another location, move to the beach, uh, send a kid to college. We want to create upward mobility. That's the whole purpose of our program. It's a little bit different.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, that's twenty, um, cottages and twenty townhomes, correct?
Yes.
So, those, the payment assistance, is all of that offered to each of those forty owners right there?
Yes. So, that's Wake County's Down Payment Assistance. So, it's kind of first come, first served. So, it's available, you know, it could be available today and not be available tomorrow. But there's other layers in there. If you see below, North Carolina Housing has something called C P L P, and that's fifty thousand dollars. And that's usually available, I've been doing this a while now, it's usually available till like October, you know? So, it's, it's always first come, first served.
So, uh, does that mean that there's a pot of money?
Mm-hmm.
And then, once that money's gone, it's gone. So, it may not cover, it may cover a quarter of that, or?
That's, yeah, but that's Wake County, like, for example, in the city of Charlotte, they have their own down payment assistance. Uh, and they've learned to spread it out every month versus first come, first served. So, instead of, uh, everybody going at the same time requesting two million dollars, say, for example, they only set aside twenty per month. So, so they'll make sure that they have, this is actually fifty thousand dollars that they have. They spread it out twenty a month that, that only we got to qualify for. So, they'll make sure they have twelve months of the year worth of opportunities.
Um, could you, when it comes to, to your definition of first-time homeowner, I know in some programs, it is, you don't have a mortgage in your name within the last, like, seven years or five years. Is it true first-time homeownership, or is there an opportunity for- Is it true first time homeownership or is there an opportunity for people to transition in that may have not have had a mortgage, have had it previously owned, but went into a rental situation because of affordability and could re-enter homeownership?
So we use FHA's, FHA's definition, and that's not owning a home for three years.
Are there any restrictions on people that filed bankruptcy in the past?
Uh, that, those are lending restrictions. It wouldn't be our homeowner restrictions. So as long as the lender is willing to lend, if they had a bankruptcy, I think that's fine for us. But we wouldn't have any restrictions on it.
And what measures do you use to prioritize your applicants, like your teachers, your firefighters, veterans, workforce?
Yeah, so what we've done in Charlotte is we literally set aside homes for those specific, uh, class of persons, for teachers. So I have one fifty-two town home community and it's all affordable, where we set aside four homes for teachers. We're setting aside four homes for CNPD officers, and they go so fast, you know? But we're not limiting just the four. We're saying we're setting aside four just for CMS teachers.
Okay, for this model here, for the twenty and twenty, how many are you setting aside for those?
Uh, something that we can discuss. I mean, uh, if, put it like this, for a teacher, I would imagine they might want a three bedroom, two bath home. We could do more three bedroom, two and a half bath homes and set aside more for teachers here. We could set aside three to four easily, I see. Set aside three to four for the town police, set aside three to four for the police officers. They go fast.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you guys partnered with any, um, veteran organizations or military, like the Home for Heroes?
Yep, so we work with a, a, a nonprofit in Charlotte where it's veteran home financing.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a ten thousand dollar grant. And so we got many veterans moving in, uh, using that grant. But typically, what we found that with the veterans, they're using the VA loan, which is a hundred percent product. So they don't even, they don't even need any subsidies typically to even move in a house because they're veterans.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Boyd? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then, um, next we'll be hearing from the Hurt Foundation.
How y'all doing?
Doing good.
Good.
How you doing?
What are we doing? Pick up? Technology.
Wonderful, isn't it?
It is fantastic. Well? Bible teaches patience, no? All right. To be recognized by your computer first. If you want to pull up your presentation. I got a couple of things I want to pull up.
Yeah.
I feel like we've already gone, I feel like this is deja vu, didn't, I felt like we did something similar to this with council in the past. But, uh, we'll do a, a brief overview of what we're talking about doing and then, uh, clarify a few things and then, um, show y'all some drawings of some ideas and things that we can do and then we can, we can go from there.
Um, and they do have the proposals in their packet, so they're able to.
Sure. Won't be able to show them the drawings we got. While this loading, I guess, my name is Michael Hurt. Uh, I'm with the Hurt Foundation and, um, born and raised here in Franklin, uh, Franklin County, Youngsville. And, um, you know, it's brought to me that we wanted to try to put together a, a fifty-five and up community here in, in Roseville. Uh, I've been a general contractor for over twenty years. I specialize in multifamily development and historical revitalization. Um, but like I said, I've been doing this longer than twenty years and, and worked all across the state, whether it was in Rocky Mountain, Nash County, Warrenton, uh, Wake Forest, Franklin County, Youngsville, Frankleton, obviously, got property in real estate in, uh, Virginia as well. And it's a reoccurring thing, the, the affordable housing, the fifty-five and up communities, it's, it's really across the whole state. It's a, it's an issue, senior housing to be specific. And so the way that this was pitched to me was that this is kind of what the town of Roseville wanted to have in their community. So that's kind of what we, we ran off of. Um, bought my first piece of property when I was eighteen. I've been kind of invested in real estate for a long time and, um, did really well. Uh, have property in Rocky Mountain and, you know, a lot of, um, you know, some lower income communities and, and that's kind of molded kind of who I am and what I wanted to do. The Hurt Foundation about is to try to, uh, create economic growth and development in, in communities that are in need. I've been able to see what real estate and what a house can do for somebody, particularly with children. Uh, I've, I've got four boys and, and a, a nice, clean place for people to live is, is very important. Um, and, and, you know, few people don't get those opportunities. And so, um, maybe on a lo- a smaller scale than some of the other people, but we've been able to have some pretty significant impact, uh, in the communities that we invest in. And, um, you know, I, I don't think Roseville would be any different. Um, you know, I, I, I don't, I'm sure y'all have seen this in the packet, just kind of a brief overview, uh, of who we are and, and what I've been able to accomplish, um, in the past. I have a, um, partner of mine, Stacy Woodhouse. Um, he's got an extensive background in real estate and, and somebody that I'd be working closely with on this project. Um, again, talk about apartment houses, um, got property, projects that we've done in Virginia, South Hill, Virginia, uh, Wilson, uh, Town of Wilson, I'm actually, uh, finishing up this project now. Um, Halifax Hotel in Halifax, North Carolina, um, took a distressed building and renovated it into seventeen apartments. So I'm, I'm actually really proud about that. That was a disaster when we got it. Um, and then the Danrem building, we just completed this. We took a building that we paid two hundred thousand for and, uh, invested two point seven into it and, and converted it into twenty-six apartments. So it's, uh, twenty-two apartments and four commercial retail. Um, started leasing two months ago and it's already a seventy percent occupancy. Um, but we're not here to talk about necessarily rental. Uh, I think there was a misconception. Somebody said that, that what we were proposing to the town was rental. Um, that was not the idea for what we proposed. What we're proposing is actually homeownership, uh, taking a duplex and selling the individual units, uh, to, to, uh, you know, the fifty-five and up community that's in need. Um, again, we want to transition to workforce housing or something different. We can do that. That just wasn't the way that, that it was sold to us. Um, this community that, that I'm, this, this duplex that I'm showing you is a community that I built in Youngsville. There was another, uh, misconception that I haven't built anything quite like this. So I just want to clear that up as well. Um, so this is a duplex community that we built. It's called Hampton Downs. Um, sixty duplexes, hundred twenty units, uh, built this about three or four years ago. It's off Ninety-Sixth Highway, uh, about a quarter mile off of US One. And so this is a similar building that we would be looking to build in, in Roseville. The only difference is, is that when we bought, when we built this, um, midway through the project, the, uh, inspections department came back. They were actually supposed to be able to be sold off as individual units. And so midway through the project, the inspections department said, no, they're, they're duplexes. You can't sell the individual units off. And a lot of it had to do with fire ratings and just different things that, that, uh, the, the window location and the, the placement of the individual units. Um, but this is a very close, uh, description of what we're looking to build here if we were given the opportunity. Um, let's see here. I don't want to lose my place. Yeah, it's not going to let me, so maybe it will. Um, again, this is a little bit different concept. This is full market rate. What we're doing in Youngsville, these are renting for about fifteen hundred a month. Um, they didn't start at fifteen hundred, but the market has brought them to that, that rate. Um, it's, it's amazing what the market's doing right now in this area and the whole, the whole perception. You know, what we're trying to achieve with this project that we're talking about doing is maintain reasonable, uh, below market value, uh, rates in their ownership. So, and this, this just kind of gives you an aerial of the property that we're working on. So H. Let's see here. So this is what we want to build here in, in the community. Um, this is something I've been working on really since our last presentation up here. Uh, and I'm already, you know, we're moving forward and building these in Frankleton as well. Um, this is a two bedroom, two bath duplex that can be sold in, as individual units. And that's what we'd like to try to do here. Um, the, uh, the shift in the property, the, the unit layout, the window location, uh, staying away from the fire barrier between the two units affords you the opportunity to be able to sell them individually. Um, like I said, this is already sealed, finished product. I mean, we're, we're moving forward with building. Uh, we've got two locations already identified in Frankleton and I've got four more, um, that we're looking to build these on. So a little bit different concept. I mean, the, you know, I like kind of the gray undertones, modern. It's just kind of working for what we're doing right now. Uh, got a bay window with a copper awning on it. But the thing about this that I like is ADA. So it really caters towards that fifty-five and up community. Um, three foot wide doors, countertop height. You know, everything is kind of a tight B layout, so you can have sideways approach if you're in a wheelchair. LVP flooring, all the thresholds are ADA compliant. Um, I mean, it's, it's, it's not reinventing the wheel, but, I mean, I'm forty-one years old. I fell down some steps a couple of weeks ago and I can tell you the next house I build is not going to have steps. Uh, my ribs still hurt. But, uh, I guess that's what happens when you start getting a little older, but, um, I mean, it's, it's a good product. It'll work, it'll look good, it'll, it'll, it'll provide a service that's needed. Granite countertops, stainless steel appliances. Um, again, it's not reinventing the wheel. However, it can be sold off, which is something that we found on the previous project through the experience, what works and what doesn't. Um, so the, the idea and the premise behind what we were talking about though with this project is, um, you know, how do we maintain low rates? How do we, how do we sell these units off, um, so that, you know, the price remains low instead of? I mean, I, I've grown up here my whole life. I mean, whether it was Wendell or Zebulon or, or any of these other emerging communities. I mean, the values of property around here is going through the roof. Um, you know, a, a thousand square foot, uh, dup- uh, duplex unit. I mean, in Youngsville, they're selling new houses for two hundred fifty dollars a square foot. And that's now. I mean, I, you know, um, I don't know what they're selling it for per square foot here in Roseville. What I can imagine is probably a little bit more than two, two hundred fifty dollars a square foot. Probably more like three, three fifty, uh, on the low end. So how can we maintain that? And it's, it's a, you know, it, what we're proposing is definitely a unique idea, something that, um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's a unique idea, something that, um, I can build this duplex for two hundred sixty-two dollars, two hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. And that's what I'm going to show you. This is my recap that we're already taking to banks right now, moving forward with. It's actually two seventy-two. The problem is, is the real estate. And then the biggest issue on top of that is the grading and the civil engineering fees and the cost it's going to take to put the infrastructure in the ground. Nobody has an idea of what's that's going to cost until you get the drawings done. And I've talked about doing a soil analysis and see what the rock situation is in granite. I mean, I, I, I believe Roseville was built on a piece of granite, if I'm not mistaken. I, I say that kind of, you know, half-heartedly joking, but it's, it's a, it's a situation. I mean, it took longer to build four oh one past Roseville than it did pretty much the entire stretch. Um, so we don't know what's in the ground there right now. And so if you put a hundred thousand dollars per lot on this property that I'm talking about and it's at three seventy-two, um, you're looking at a sale price of a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars per door. That's what we would be looking at.
That's with those numbers right there.
If a hundred thousand dollars a door is going to cover it on the grading cost. I just finished an apartment complex that I built. It's, I'm breaking it down into phases, it's a personal development mine. It's a hundred and sixty doors and the initial grading cost is what kills you. And we put over one point two million dollars in the initial grading cost. It could easily be that for that kind of a development here.
And so with the numbers, with the grading and in grading, is that including the blasting or is that?
I, 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 I mean, I don't, I'm putting a budget number for the grading. That's that, you don't, you won't know until you get a soil analysis and drawn.
I understand and I, and I, I'm, I'm one hundred percent part of the rock on there. So there's going to have to be blasting and all of that. So my question is, that grading number.
Right.
Does that hundred thousand include the blasting for this site?
It's, it, it's a budgeted number that I, I mean, through my experience, what I came up with, I would not go to the bank with a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for it. I would get the drawings done first.
I understand that.
Right.
But just estimate.
There's no way to estimate it because it's just, it's a crap sheet.
Okay.
And anybody tells you any different, they're not telling you the truth.
I, I think, I think, uh, I think she's asking, how, how good is that number you think?
A hundred thousand? I mean, if we're talking seventeen lots, I mean, obviously, that's a, that's one point seven, that's pretty strong.
So even with rock, it's pretty strong.
I mean, I think that's pretty strong, but you don't know, I mean.
I understand that, but hypothetically, based on.
Hypothetically, you would think, you would think, you would think, but I mean, you also don't, I mean, when somebody brought up COVID earlier, when COVID hit, framing prices doubled. We went from a framing package on a, an apartment building at a hundred thousand dollars to two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred fifty thousand. I mean, you don't know what the mark holds, is kind of what I'm getting at. I mean, we could have, I mean, tariffs was talking about coming in. It could really have a significant impact. Last year, you couldn't get RCP pipe in time. Now you can get it pretty plentiful. So I mean, it's just all, it's ebb and flow. Um, but I mean, I think a hundred thousand dollars a doors, I mean, that's, that's not a door, that's a building, obviously. I mean, that's pretty, that's going to be pretty strong. I wouldn't go into it at twenty-five thousand or fifty. I, I mean, just personally, I, I mean, that's, I think you cut your nose off to spite your face. I mean, let's just, because you got it, I mean, that's the biggest thing. And, you know, my, my, I, I got to where I don't give grading prices really. Um, I just, I'd rather, if you're going to do it, let's spend, let's spend the money, get the drawings done, right? So then you can know exactly where you're at. But, um, but not in this scenario, I think that this is a long-term hold, what we're proposing. But I do think that it's going to keep values extremely low. Uh, not extreme, well, I mean, I, I, I mean, this is a, this is a, um, this is not a, a five-year deal. This is not a ten-year deal. This could, this could be the whole lifespan of the property, what we're proposing. Make it last fifty, sixty years. And, you know, the theory is, is that we give it a, a below market value price, sell the unit. They have, they, they, they own it, they pay their tax. They have, they own it, they pay their taxes, they pay their insurance, and upon their death, it defers back to the Hurt Foundation. And then, we turn around and sell it all over again to somebody that's in the same, you know, the same threshold that we're trying to meet. If it's fifty-five and up, it's great. It's workforce housing. It kind of skews what we're talking about a little bit. I think the idea was trying to help the people in the community that are at that fifty-five age threshold. So, it's, you know, what I would say is, if this is something that y'all are interested in pursuing, then we can sit down, if there was some kind of a LOI or something that y'all were interested in doing, then we could sit down, we could talk about, we could go over the numbers more in detail, figure out what works for the town, what doesn't. If you want to do it, great. We can move forward with it. And if you don't, then you've got two other great candidates that are in line. And I wouldn't be opposed to it.
So, just to confirm, this is affordable, basically, generation after generation for the life of the buildings, not for the first homeowner?
Right.
Yeah.
No, I mean, this is, we want to, I mean, this is going to help address the problem for decades, not just in the interim.
Thank you.
And when you said, "When the person dies," what if they don't want to live there anymore?
There would be a restriction on it. If they had to go to like a nursing home or something to that effect, then it would defer back to the Hurt Foundation because the intent is to help the people that are immediately in need.
So, the people that live there for, people aren't living in homes for thirty, forty years anymore. But if somebody lives there for ten years, then it reverts back to the home, to the Hurt Foundation, and that person doesn't have any investment in that home when they sell it?
But that's, I mean, but then we would turn around and resell it for the same price or close to it. It wouldn't be, you know, you may have inflation because you'd have to go back and fix it back up. But then, that's the difference. And like I said, it's unique. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not, but it does keep the prices low because I don't think that you're going to be able to get a thousand-square-foot condo or duplex unit in Roseville for a hundred-and-eighty, you know, under two-hundred thousand dollars in ten years.
And is, you said that that drawing or that picture of the home in Youngsville, that's what you were proposing for Roseville? Is that land restricted or the Hurt Foundation owns that? So, this would be your very first project like that?
Well, that's not, I mean, the Hurt Foundation is brand new. Don't get, I mean, that's new. But no, my company built that, and we own it. We own multiple properties in that location.
But my question is, that property that you own there, does it have the same guidelines, rules, laws?
Amount.
That, so this is the first one?
This will be the very, this is the first of its kind, this is the first I've ever done like this? And I think it's, to my knowledge, I don't know of anybody that's ever done anything quite like this.
Okay.
But that's correct. Yes, ma'am. It's not the first development I've built, though.
Right, but it's the first with the land purchases coming back to the Hurt Foundation?
And we've done, we've done other deals with, I mean, this isn't my first public-private partnership either. So, I mean, it's kind of, you know, it's about as creative, I mean, the cool thing about real, I like doing cool projects. I mean, why am I, I mean, that's why I show the historic stuff. I enjoy stuff like that. I enjoy going into a community that is distressed and making a difference. I do. I mean, it's, I got kids. I mean, I want to help kids. I mean, that's why I coach. I coached, I started coaching to help my kids, but, you know, the other kids come with it too, and so, that's a blessing. But I mean, you know, you can get as creative as you want to get with real estate. It doesn't have to be the same, like what this gentleman was talking about earlier. That's a unique way to go about it. I mean, I think that's wonderful. It's all about, like, what's best for the community. And, and, you know, what I'm proposing is something that, I mean, whether we do it here or we do it somewhere else, I'm going to do it because I like the idea. I think it works. It's a long-term play. It's not, I'm not going to make much of any money in the initiative. I mean, the construction money, I've got fifteen percent on the building. I mean, my construction company would do it. I got fifteen percent on that. That just basically, I mean, it's, you know, overhead and profit and everything, you typically run about ten percent. So, I mean, we'll make a little bit of money on it. But I mean, the theory is, is for it to stay in the Hurt, it will, it's not the theory, it's what would happen. The Hurt, the Hurt Foundation would be overseeing this and making this happen. And, and, you know, it's going to have a significant impact, whether, like I said, if it happens here, great. But I see a path where this could, could have a huge impact. I mean, Banerel, there's no housing in Banerel. You can figure out something like this for a senior community. And that's the thing, like, like teacher housing, that's always an important thing, too, that people are struggling with trying to figure out because the numbers don't work. I mean, you know, fifteen-hundred dollars for an apartment, if you're going to rent it, I mean, that's, I mean, I was paying four-hundred in Grable when I was, I mean, I'm only forty-one. That was like twenty years ago. So, this is kind of, I mean, it's unique, but I like the idea. It's cool how, this could work, and it would, I think it would be, I know it would benefit the community. And, you know, like I said, if y'all want to talk about it and want to work on it, we could sit down and work on it and try to move it forward. And if you don't, you want to roll with somebody else, that's okay, too.
All right.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Given that we asked our staff to come up with a good balance of housing mix, and you talk about this project being fifty-five age restricted?
Yes, sir. That's what I was under the impression the town wanted, so that's kind of what we...
So, is there any flexibility? Because we still have fifty-five age that are working as teachers. Someone still serving in the National Guard Reserve, things like that. So, it's going to be only age restricted or their flexibilities to still have their working class?
I think there's flexibilities in multiple different ways. If the town wanted it, then I think we could work on ways to make it happen.
Okay. And then, my other question is, this is my first time meeting you, so I wasn't a part of the staff that you met last time.
Yes, sir.
But I'm reading the packet, so I have two questions. Why did your organization fail to meet the town's response deadline despite giving over three weeks? And why did it take repeated prompting to get a reply?
I, you know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure why. I don't, I know that's probably not a good answer. I'd have to go back. I do take pretty good notes. I'd have to go back and see what we had going on. You know, it just, could have got an email, and I didn't see it, didn't respond. I'm usually pretty prompt in my responses, so... But no, I mean, I'll take ownership of it. I mean, if that's, if that's the timeframe that it was, that's what happened.
Okay.
But I'm here today.
Thank you.
What about all the questions? Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having the opportunity.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir. Good meeting.
Good work.
Thank you.
And then, of course, we invited back tonight Habitat for Humanity there in the audience. If there was any additional questions for them, they're just here, like the town manager said, they presented in July, so we don't need another presentation. But if there are any additional questions or I don't know if you wanted to say anything to add or... But just to say hello.
Yeah, I think, I think where our proposal differs, just in relation to the Hurt Foundation, is that that is homeownership with no equity generation at all. Our model, even with a ground lease, provides for equity generation. And so, I think it's an interesting comparison. You guys have to choose what you want to do. But I just wanted to make sure that I made it clear that ours is some equity, and we serve families who are fifty-five and up as well.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? I think we've got some questions. If you want to come back.
All right, ma'am.
I think Commissioner Austin has a question, too.
Yeah.
This question I didn't ask you last time.
Okay.
Partnership with Home for Heroes. Have you done that in the past?
Yeah, we do not have a formal partnership with Home for Heroes. We do house veterans, but we don't have a formal partnership with that group.
Are your company open to doing that?
We, I mean, we'd be willing to look at it and see if it is something that is, that works for both parties.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I won't leave this time. Anybody else have questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right. We'll turn it back over to you. Anything you want to close with?
No, I don't have anything additional to add. The purpose of us bringing them, each one of these potential partners, applicants back before you was just based off the conversations that you all have had and the questions that you all have had. And so, our goal was just to have them present for you all to answer, to ask and answer any questions as you would like. I know that you all have fielded questions and asked several questions over the lifespan of the effort. And so, you may have a lot of the answers that you have already. So, I don't want anyone that's in the audience, any of the applicants, to think that the lack of questions is a lack of care. But they have asked several questions, and we've communicated with you all via email and passed the information back and forth. And so, our goal is to bring this, these options before you to get clarity on, one, the partner at a high level, the who, and then also on the what. You saw some different alternatives and different language used around affordable housing. Some people say accessible housing, senior housing. And so, as we get clearer on the vision that you all have for the use of the property, it'll help us to be able to work through that and also do the exploration that we need to do on the property, which we've already planned on doing as well. And so, we look to you all. We can bring it back. Again, we weren't looking to you all to make a decision tonight, but we will pay it for additional conversation if needed. Or if you all wanted to talk it out and give us some general guidance in this moment, we could do that as well. But we weren't expecting like a real-time decision for you in this, in this moment.
I think the, you know, from what I heard from board last time, we want to go ahead and make a decision. So, let's put it on the agenda for consideration, maybe the first meeting of, can it be next month, a week, month after that? The, and thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Appreciate, appreciate that a lot. And thank, thank the staff, Michael, and everybody else, if Stephen and Eric, you know, you guys, I appreciate, appreciate all that. But let's, let's go ahead. Any objections?
You just said next month, correct?
As quick as possible.
Yes.
Maybe even as early as next month.
Yes.
We can start it for the first meeting of next...
I think that was a commission, one of the commissioners' requests is go ahead. The only thing, you know, you know, there's a lot of comments somewhat about the rock and all that stuff. And I can tell you, the history of it is the reason the town has the property is because of the bad rock and stuff. The developers that were going to put something there, it was so expensive to put just those roads in to connect here to there. And that, I think, I think Granite Falls goes through that, too, don't it, where it connects through Granite Falls?
It will. It's supposed to connect through there, yeah.
It was so expensive to do that, they just gave us, to us to get out of the agreement to put the road in. So, so it's, I think it's going to be a very expensive project to do from the civil standpoint. So, you know, one-point-seven million dollars, that may be a good number. Probably, depending on how much dynamite you use, right? But just, everybody keep that in mind because I'm confident, like you said, there is going to be a lot of blasting rock because that's, that's a bad area back behind us. So, with that, I appreciate it. Thanks, thanks for everybody's participation. Thank y'all for coming out tonight. Appreciate that a lot. We had a couple LDO things. Mike, I see Michael, Ellen Barker, Barker back there. LDO zoning use for vehicle service minor. So, come on up and tell us what you're talking about here.
Sure. Just a moment to connect the system. I'm doing items five and six, and item seven will be a collaboration with Michael McFarland about the LDO sign regulations. And I think five and six can maybe morph together. Once I get through my couple of slides here on the vehicle minor service use specifically, you can contemplate whether you just want to roll into the more comprehensive topic about Main Street and permitted uses in zoning, which is focused on the general commercial zoning district because that is the dominant zoning district all along the Main Street corridor. So...
Yeah, just, just one thing I want to clarify, and I think the board, I think the board's clear on this. I want to make sure everybody else is clear. You're talking about two things. You're talking about the whole corridor as overlay for, for some limited usage. This, I think, like vehicle, so that's the whole corridor. And I think this idea of the reduced lot sizes or loose setbacks and parking is just for that downtown area. It's just for that corner. It's not for the whole thing. So, if that was, I kind of read what you wrote there. You may think we're considering the whole thing, the whole, the whole Main Street as having those setbacks, and that's not the deal.
Okay.
It's just that corner down there.
Sure.
For East, East Young and Main Street. Is that, is that your understanding?
Well, let's consider this the first bite of the apple, and you'll be able to tell staff exactly what you want to change. So, that's going to be the end of this presentation. This is more where we are today about this specific one use that drew some concern, and then zoning along the Main Street.
Well, let me ask this question. Has anybody on the commission has said anything about eliminating all the setbacks on Main Street?
As a directive to staff? No.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's what we're after. We're not after...
And there's no text amendment language in this presentation tonight. But we're here to elicit your input as to what you do want staff to work on as far as text amendments.
I want to make sure we're working on the right rock.
Sure, sure. Again, staff's not working on anything at the moment besides giving you a presentation tonight about these two main, high-level topics. One is the specific zoning use, and then the other is the generality of Main Street zoning as it exists today. So, item five is specifically about the single permitted principal use called vehicle minor service. This is an excerpt from the LDO section five. You see it highlighted in yellow there. And this use is permitted in four zoning districts: G C, general commercial, C H, highway commercial, G I, general industrial, and then B T, business and technology. Let me see if I can get this little... Okay. And then, as most uses have, they have a little section of use standards and development standards with a description, et cetera, there. So, it's five-point-four-point-one-point-V. And this is that section. So, this is some descriptions about this vehicle minor service use, descriptive of the characteristics of what that use would be, and diving down into like, really, the specifics of what the auto-centric repair work would be. And for comparison, there is a vehicle major service. So, it's kind of a high and a low version of the same vehicle repair type use. And so, things that are detailed here in characteristics, number one, would be permitted in the other, the more heavier one, but also those more intense types of things. Things generally called transmission repairs, painting, paint booths, those types of things would also be permitted. So, all sorts of collision repair, all of those would be in that vehicle major service. But today, but we're just looking right at the minor service right now. Accessory uses, again, things like office parking, vehicle storage. And then, the use standards are really where the, where this discussion gets at. You know, stockpiling of parts or salvaging, the storage of wrecked or unregistered vehicles, no outdoor speaker system, all work retained within a closed building, however bay doors may open. And then, E here is the one that's currently, and I'll get to the text amendment made by an applicant in just a moment. It does limit three service bays are permitted for any building doing this use. F is a landscape buffer in compliance with section six-point-two, adjacent residential properties. That's always a requirement for development of this use. And then, this is a detail about inoperable vehicles, et cetera, which again is a kind of part and parcel with a lot of vehicle repair type of operations. As the board is aware, there is text amendment TA twenty-five-zero-four. This was originally slated for the August meeting, I believe it was. No, July meeting. It was postponed until the September second board meeting for its legislative hearing. In the middle here is what the applicant is proposing to change that one line. So, it's E where it says currently, "No more than three service bays shall be permitted", clarifying that only three could face a public right-of-way. But then, it left it as a open-ended, no maximum number of bays. So, those would be bays that don't... don't face a public right-of-way to the sides, to the rear of the building, however. This went to the planning board on May 27th, and the planning board made a recommendation of approval, but also gave the board their suggested items, which would be either or both of these, prohibiting any service base facing a public right-of-way, or then simply adding a maximum of 10 service bays. And staff supports either one of those, certainly the setting a maximum as opposed to currently unlimited, because that could obviously spiral out of control in some sites. So staff definitely supports the setting a maximum, whether 10 is the right number, whether eight or six, that's to be determined by the board. But so this is how this will come to you in just a few weeks from the, from the planning board. So that does conclude my discussion on that. Again, would like, or sorry, my presentation on that, would like to open up for, for your input on, you know, how you see this use.
Any questions?
Sure. So there's been some discussion, I guess informal, just out loud, that if we're talking about a general downtown Main Street zoning district overlay, that this vehicle minor repair would be prohibited.
Okay.
You know, completely. So the question there is, do we even look at this until, you know, until we get something definitive on Main Street, if we're going to do a, a conditional zoning overlay?
Sure.
Because if the sentiment is that this shouldn't fly, it's going to be, it could be denied just because it's not restricted from Main Street. Whereas if it was, if there was a zoning overlay, so where it couldn't happen on Main Street, then this might fly because it wouldn't be there, it'd be on some other street.
Okay. My next presentation about the overall Main Street corridor gets into the fact that the LDO already defines Main Street corridor as a geography, which I think is a starting point, at least to describe the general areas that perhaps the board wants to put some limitations on where uses are permitted. So that's already a starting point. Here, I brought back up the section of the, the use standards or development standards, and putting in a restriction here that this use may not be permitted in certain geographies is, I think, leading towards perhaps what, what you're speaking of. It could be as simple as that, or it could not be as simple as that. I'm going to look to the town attorney for maybe some guidance on that. Or do we want to get to my second presentation?
If I could jump in just for table setting after the manager says what he was going to say.
Yeah, so one thing I think is worth mentioning, that maybe you can talk about as well. So even if we conduct a, if we do a text amendment, and we say we don't want a certain zoning use allowed in an area, right? One of the things that we're, we'll, we'll likely face is that if someone in the past, you know, be it 2019, 2018, had an interest in a property, which is in this case, like, an example of that will be where the Greenway business sits right now. O'Reilly's had an interest in this property in 2008, 2019, and they had, what was it called, conducted?
Uh.
I don't know the, the name of it, but.
All right. You're speaking of conditional zoning of the property?
Yeah, right. You get a conditional zoning approved at a certain point in time, that does not expire, right? And so, and so even if we change, please correct me if I'm wrong, if our, even if we do an overlay, or we change our intent, or we change the vision that we have for our Main Street corridor, if someone has had one of those things conducted in the past, they can, they can come forth as an applicant to build that thing that was approved or was seen as being an allowable use at that point in time. It's the same way, in essence, principle, if you had our U D O, the L D O. And so we can make these changes, make these decisions and make these changes now, but it will, even if we do that, the ability for, they can continue to be an applicant. And so in addition to if we make these changes, one thing that we also need to be thinking about is how we market our vision for our downtown, so that it be clear on these are the things that we desire, even if something may be allowed to. Because I bring this up to mention, because there's, it's kind of like a multi-pronged driver to how we got to this point for the presentation. One is the specific thing, but also then the vision piece two, and how do we kind of like insulate ourselves from having those things from coming forth? I hope that's making sense. But I wanted, I wanted to see if he would talk about that a bit, but I'll defer to Dave and let him.
So we, we might, we might could, as they say in eastern North Carolina, we might could have started with, with what you can no longer do effective 2024. So towns no longer have the authority to downzone. You just don't have it. You are in the business of upzoning currently. There are, there are pending bills with the General Assembly, at least one of which made crossover, that would restore your zoning authority. But right now, the town and no city in the state has the authority to remove permitted uses from a currently zoned location, something in our jurisdiction that it currently has. You don't have the ability to do that. You can't do it by overlay, you can't do it by your own initiated text amendment, and you can't do it by a map amendment. And that's only for commercial. So as to residential, you can still, you can still downzone. But as to commercial, non-residential uses, you cannot downzone. And I know I've brought it up a couple of times, and when it was pending in 2024, I, I tried to raise the alarm at how bad this was, and the mayor, I believe, joined with other mayors to oppose this. But that's where we are now. You cannot adopt an ordinance that would eliminate minor vehicle repair in the general commercial district. That's prohibited. You cannot do that. You cannot eliminate that use.
So in, in the context of the most recent example of this, where it came up, the property in question was not zoned for vehicle minor repair, and that's the only reason why?
Correct.
It didn't happen.
So they were asking to go up, and you can still say no to an up request.
Okay.
What you cannot do is of your own accord, start to adopt a more modern vision, which is, no other state, by the way, has adopted this sort of prohibition on downzoning, as it was always perceived as a fundamental role of local government, to adopt a comprehensive plan, to have a vision that's revisited once every five to 10 years, and then zone in accordance with the plan to get long-term the sort of community that the citizens want. That now for non-residential is no longer the case in North Carolina. If your property is currently zoned for a use, anything in our permitted use table, that cannot be taken away. It's as though you have a vested right. So that is completely different. With regard to sites that currently have a conditional use zoning, a conditional zone, not conditional use zoning, but a conditional zoning, those are no different than a general zoning case. And before this new law had been passed, those areas could have been rezoned to even if they had conditions. Towns have always had the authority to do general zoning. It's only conditional zonings that require the consent of the property owner. So you could imagine a town that might have a, a previously approved conditional zoning case for a use that was a nightclub and bar, and it was ongoing, and the town says, you know what? That is an absolute disaster in our town. And the town would initiate a zoning case to change the zoning for that site. In most communities, that would allow the nightclub and bar to continue to operate for so long as it was there. But after it had gone dormant for six months, it would lose its non-conforming status, and the new zoning regime would kick in. That's the way that worked. It preserved the expectation and investment, to a certain extent, of the current operator or current owner, but it wouldn't last forever. That no longer can be done.
Yeah, I think, and clarify this for me, because I may not be thinking about this right. You know, the new law, you can't, the usage, if it's, if it's allowable, you can't take that away, the usage.
Correct.
But like in the overlay, like we've talked about, the Main Street overlay, 1.6 miles, you can limit the size, you can limit the bays, you can limit the, the way it's facing the street. You can, in other words, you could put in an overlay, certain things that says, you know, a tire company can't have a two bays and it can't face Main Street, right? But you can't, I mean, they could put it there, but it's really, if we, if we're trying to keep it a look, we can, we can do that, right? I mean.
I've had, we may have had a conversation about some of this as well. So in addition to not being able to reduce the permitted uses, you're not permitted to take any action that would reduce the quote, "density" or "intensity" of the use. So you can imagine how changing the architectural orientation might be totally fine, whereas I think our minor use is currently limited to three bays. If we went to two, that would be illegal. You can't go from three to two. But if you went from three to 10, not more, up to 10 and not more than three facing the street, you haven't downzoned, you've just, you put meat on the bones. But in some ways, you've upzoned that site, right? You haven't, you haven't taken anything away in that case. So that would have been, that would be fine.
So we can't change anything that we have currently on the books unless we increase?
So, so none of this has been tested in court. So you certainly can't remove permitted uses. That seems like that's never going to fly. Could you adjust setbacks and add other requirements and flesh out additional requirements? Well, so long as you don't run into one of those prohibited, the General Assembly was trying to figure out, what will city councils do to try to avoid this provision? So it's a cat and mouse game. So they, they've added this density provision and intensity language. But I think you could start to think, and Commissioner Paul and I actually had this conversation, what sort of things would you like to see in terms of the layout? Because architectural design is only prohibited as to residential, not as to non-residential, that would make sure that even if it was a use that you don't like, it turns out to be a use that looks good on your Main Street, right?
Yeah.
So, so that becomes that piece.
Okay. I think, I think we transitioned. So let's wrap up, let's wrap up this. Any questions on this, this bay thing? Now, my understanding from what you just presented is if the building is on the corner and has two public right-of-ways on the corner, then it has to face the back or something.
If the board approves this text amendment, which will be with you in two weeks, only three could face a public right-of-way, any other bays, and you all can control the number, and eight, whatever, would, could not face a public right-of-way. So the corner lot, yes.
I was speaking on, on the planning board's suggestion is if it's a corner lot, and you put a service center there, anywhere in town, then none of the bays can fit, face either, either street.
I think that's a question of would restricting any public-facing right-of-way be a down or more restrictive condition than the current condition, which is no more than three service bays, period?
Yeah, I think as long as you give them three service bays, it doesn't matter. If you say it has to be on the back of the building, you're still giving them three service bays. You're not downsizing it. You're not.
It's silent orientation to a street. If we put a limit, or sorry, if we prohibited public street facing, would that be a restriction?
The answer is we don't, we don't yet know.
Okay.
So we have the language of the statute, and nothing's been, made it through a courtroom yet. So as a logical exercise, and I, I'm going to suspect that the attorney who submitted this thought through that. So no more than three service, there's no, there's no reduction in the right here. There's a, there's a improvement perhaps of the architectural, along with an expansion, right, of the overall use for the site. That's what you get with this kind of idea. The applicant, I actually sat in on that planning board meeting, so I'll pass along to you. The applicant remarked upon a request from a planning board member, "Why three? Why not zero?" And the applicant's attorney responded with, "That would be fine with us, but we think it would create non-conformities for more traditional places, but we're totally fine with that if that's what you want to do." Because if you've seen a modern Chapel Hill tire, I don't know why we can't mention who the applicant was, they don't, they don't have their bays facing the street anymore.
Yeah, it's all in what you want it to look like, like your, your, your front edge, basically, without limiting what, you're not removing anything that they couldn't have already. You're just changing.
Correct. You could imagine a zoning ordinance that didn't care what your use was, so long as it looked like a Swiss chalet.
Right.
Right? You don't care what's behind the facade.
Right.
But everything along our Main Street shall look like X.
Right.
And that only would apply to non-residential.
Right.
So I think if the board were to take the current proposal and ask the applicant, or just say, "We're going to change this language to say, you know, no bays facing a public right-of-way, and there should be a maximum of, again, six, eight, 10, whatever you decide, total bays permitted," that you could adopt, and then we could enforce that on the next site development plan that's for that proposed use.
So what are you going to bring as a text amendment, what they proposed, the first?
It's their text amendment. Certainly, I can discuss this outcome tonight, and they can read that and make it, make it a revision before we do the packet for you all. And if they change it, basically striking any facing a public right-of-way, that would be in their better interest.
We would also need to add to this language an exclusion for all existing uses. That is another workaround the cities are now ensuring, because another prohibition on the downzoning statute is that you can't create a non-conformity. So in everything that you do adopt, you expressly say, "This does not apply to any locations that currently have three service bays facing the right-of-way." Just doesn't, just doesn't apply at all. It's, we might just want to wait six months to see if the statute changes, but.
Works for me. How do you read, how do you read that? If somebody wanted to put six bays on a corner, could you put three facing one right-of-way and three facing all the right-of-way? How do you read that?
That's the way I'd read it.
Especially if I was the applicant.
Especially if I was the applicant.
So I would, what I normally do is I defer to the interim planning director, and when he or she tells me that they're not sure what it means, I tell them to write it again. But in this case, I would say the word "or" is doing a lot of work, facing the side or rear yard. So that means that we count up everything facing a side or a rear yard, and then that's your cap.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'd like to say, whenever this comes before the board, it, this is proposed for several different zoning units. I'd like to see on the map where those zoning sections are in town that would be affected by this.
Sure. So that'd be any property zone, general commercial, highway commercial, G I or B T. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Unless we have something in those districts that is minor vehicle service and has more than three bays. I don't know if we do, right now. We just have to look.
I think we have two, well, we have.
So those would be excluded expressly.
Yeah. I can roll into my next presentation.
Yes, sir.
And some of the thunder's already been spoken, but.
And let me just add, on every one of these text amendments, these are no different than someone standing upstairs at the General Assembly and yelling down at the body saying, "I would like the law changed." The answer can just be to just say no. You don't have to find the right language. You don't have to write it. You can just vote no.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
The board adopted the original language. Great. So it was, it was.
Right. It was the right language for the board at some point.
Four years ago. Okay. Item six, we'll roll into this. The Main Street corridor, LDO permitted zoning uses. It's a hyperlink to section five, which is all the, the tables of the permitted uses. Again, for this discussion, I'm kind of calling the Main Street corridor from Jonesville up north about to Williamson, Polley Town Road, that area. That's really where any non-residential zoning ends at that point in time, really in either direction. So that's where most of the properties in that vicinity are zoned, the G C district, if they're not a residential zoning district, which most of those are the R L. However, there are a number of properties throughout this corridor, and really throughout the town, that have a conditional zoning or a special use permit approved, specific to that property. And as the board understands, over the years, the board's been approving conditional zonings, or back in the U D O time, special use permits, which had conditions of approval. or back in the UDO time, special use permits, which had conditions of approval with them. There was a legal document called an order of approval that would get recorded and run with the land. So not all the properties are by right standard general commercial zoning districts, following every single rule in the LDO. They're customized zoning, specific to that project. And in my entire time here, I think we brought maybe one general district rezoning to the board that's been processed. All others have been conditional zonings. So very specific to that property having some level of conditions. At the very least, it's usually the one condition about, here are the permitted uses. And by omission, they're, they're deleting out any other uses otherwise allowed in that zoning district. So you've seen this before in a table form, and say, "We'll do any of these 15 uses, but we won't do any of those other uses." So that, basically, sorry, I just kind of, my second and third points here kind of went over that house. Some properties have conditional, SCP conditions that are very specific to them, and then the minority of properties have no conditions, thus are by right and following the, the LDO 100%. This is a map that staff has begun to get to the point of that question, where is the zoning that allows a lot of these uses that we have, you know, concern about? And then breaking it down, which ones are the general, non-conditioned or non-SUP properties, and then which are properties that have unique regulations to them, meaning conditions of approval or special use permit conditions? Staff is still working on that table, and then what will come with that is a large set of attachments, which will be all of those property entitlements to follow. And this would be the go-by as we analyze the entire Main Street corridor as to what is permitted where. So then we can focus on whatever use the board wants to look at. Vehicle minor service, where is it permitted today and where isn't it permitted according to the LDO? And from that, the board can make decisions on, do we want to do anything special about that particular use? The town attorney's given us the guidance about what is legal from the downzoning perspective, but until you know the facts about these properties out there, you don't know if it's really a true thing about, you know, if it's zoned, it, it will come, or if it's just going to, you know, not be permitted in a lot of properties, and it's not as big a problem potentially developing there as, as might be presumed. So again, we're, we're working on this data, and we plan to get this to you maybe the next time that we meet on this topic, and, and then we can go to fully analyze this. And any uses that are of concern, that's the input that staff wants. If you want us to focus on 10 uses, give you an analysis, where is it? We will give you the exact addresses, if and how they're permitted on those properties.
So Dave, why do we have to get that granular? I mean, it sounds like it's going to be a lot of work. I mean, it's going to be a tremendous, why is it, the overlay can't have restrictions that April and the Main Street people say, "We don't want these businesses in there." If anybody has vested rights, then they can use those vested rights to say, you know, "I can, I can do this." But why, why do we have to study each one and all that stuff? Why can't we just put an overlay with what is being requested? And then each person have to have, have to prove they have vested rights to do something other than what the overlay say?
In 2023, that was absolutely the situation. Now you're prohibited from creating a non-conformity or downzoning by overlay or any other way. There's no, there's no workaround. There's no downzoning.
And downzoning is taking away.
Taking away.
But it, it doesn't come into play until you ask for something that you already have invested.
That's not the way the General Assembly views it. The way that was lobbied to them is that if a, when a town downzones, and this happened because of a certain jurisdiction where a powerful citizen caught the attention of the General Assembly, when they imposed their overlay, the plans of the land speculator to sell the land he had acquired at certain intersections for future convenience store gas station combos just disappeared overnight. He hadn't secured invested rights, but had relied upon the existing zoning and acquiring that property. And that was the argument that apparently the majority of the General Assembly found compelling on that day. So he thought he could do gas stations and sheets or what have you, and the next day he couldn't do that. But he didn't have legal vested rights, because all he had was the expectation of what the current zoning was. And then an overlay was added to areas that were deemed, I think they were called the rural area, they were sort of at the edges to prevent sprawl, is what the local government was doing, and, and it went away, and he was upset.
Well, see, it wouldn't go away today. If we did overlay and they had vested rights, it wouldn't go away today like it did two years ago.
Correct. This is, this is about protecting, this is about protecting those who don't have vested rights.
We can't take it away from them, but why can't we just establish a, a more, more than, more than anything else, a vision of an overlay that we want? And if anybody got vested rights on there, it doesn't apply to them.
They're protecting.
Right. So now the statute essentially says everyone has vested rights. So whatever you can do today, you can do forever, unless you, the property owner, consent to a restriction. Everyone got vested rights when that session law passed. Even as to vacant land, it became vested. So if you had a general commercial or a light industrial site, it became vested in everything that was permitted in your permitted use table on that day. Nothing could be taken away unless you consent, the property owner. That was the, that's the idea.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand you can't take it away. I'm not understanding.
Can't take away the prospect. You can't even take away the, you can't take away the opportunity. So the property can now be sold to another person in arms-length transaction, and that person can know that the permitted use will never change. They could get more permitted uses, but they would never get fewer.
Yeah, I'm hoping all of it changed, because it really, it really doesn't make sense. I mean, we're not trying to take anything away from anybody that already had. We're just trying to establish a vision.
And that's the way the law always had been. If you had, if you had a vested right as to something you were building for a period of time, no one could cut that away from you. And the vast majority of ordinances in the United States and in North Carolina also provided a non-conforming protection. So if you had an operating use that was no longer permitted after action of the city council, you could continue to do that as long as it kept going. It could be, could go, keep going for 100 years. And there were only very few exceptions to, to that in some jurisdictions for health and human safety, yeah, kind of ideas. Now, it was a huge, it was a huge change.
Where is the legislators?
I'm sorry?
Are they, have they, are they working on a bill to?
There are, there's 13 of them that reference the statute. What appears to have happened is, I think only two or three of them are to change the general statutes, and the other 10 are just for my county and just for my town to do it as local legislation, kind of, you know, hey, we know where the bad actors are, they're over there in those big cities, and you didn't really mean us over here in Pigs Knuckle. And so that was the, I don't know if it was Pigs Knuckle, could be any, any town. So there, there's a lot of local legislation bills out there, but I noticed none of those have gone through at my last check. So nobody's been able to sneak it under the radar yet. It's got to change, though. It's, it's.
Horrible.
I mean, this is a great example, just to editorial comment. Main Street for Roseville, being here for 30 years, it was a different kind of a road. Not just, Roseville was a different kind of a town, this was a different kind of a road. It was the kind of road that you wanted to have heavier commercial, because that was what its purpose was. That doesn't make sense after the bypass went through. Preaching the choir.
And that was the end of that presentation for the discussion, so.
Any questions for Mike? Sorry. I researched the House bill. When will we see this, Mike, do you know?
So right now, there's no text amendment related to this topic. The map, though, I, I think if you call us back at, say, the September work session, we could have something there. And I think I understand the concerns about the zoning uses, and we'll be able to tell you exactly on what properties they're permitted today, under their just blanket G.C. or their conditional or SUP zoning entitlement. And we can table that out, and then you can understand where those uses could be performed potentially.
Do we want to ask our planning department about a text amendment for properties up on Main Street by East Young?
By what?
Main Street and East Young.
I think he's going to do that next. Are you doing it next, or are you going to?
Are you speaking about parking and setbacks and things like that?
Are you going to do that? No? It was in, it was in your package, so, you're not.
Those are the next iterations of perhaps changing and loosening, which is permitted, loosening some regulations on things like parking and setbacks to induce economic development and commercial development in certain areas. That's certainly something we can start to flesh forward. I believe Meredith Gruber is already kind of aware of that and thinking towards that. So if, if that's the board's direction, we can come up with some initial language. I can present that also back in September, if you like.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Let me just add, because I've mentioned it to at least two board members privately, one idea that came to mind. And again, nothing's been challenged in court. If you don't reduce the density, you don't reduce the number of permitted uses, there's nothing, there's nothing in the downzoning statute addressing the approval process for a project. Many communities have a different path for approval for projects that are likely controversial or of concern, that is, they could be, could have an unintended impact, they need to be designed very carefully, given whatever we might, as a legislature, think is of concern. Currently, if you are with a permitted use, that, the development of that site for a non-residential use will never come to the Board of Commissioners. It used to, because the board used to review site plans and subdivision plots. But now you don't see them. It may not be much control, but it is some if the board were the, and it would be the staff, if the board wanted the staff to no longer be the authority for reviewing things as an administrative matter, but instead the board or the Board of Adjustment, or even the planning board, could review plans as a quasi judicial matter under subjective standards that the board adopts as part of an ordinance. So magnesium smelting along Main Street is a permitted use. It remains a permitted use. However, when you go through site plan, it goes through a quasi judicial process that takes a look at subjective standards such as impacts upon neighboring communities and making sure the design is such that it's sensitive to traffic impacts and into the environment. You could imagine writing a set of regulations that, it's still permitted, but now there's some involvement of the elected officials or two other officials who may be exercising judgment. The staff has very limited judgment. They, they're, they're supposed to be checking objective boxes. Just an idea. That hasn't been written, that's a lot of work, but.
That's a painful process.
It's painful. One, two, three, right? Three of you were on the board when you got out of that business, because it was painful the other way, too, and the meetings went forever. But you had a hook.
Can that be done on an ad hoc basis?
No.
Just try it.
Any, any other discussions, Mike?
No.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
We'll roll into item seven, and Michael's going to start.
Yep. I think, Michael, you wrapping up the work session with, with the signage regulations, and then we'll talk about the chamber real quickly.
Yeah.
Are you, are you talking about the chamber, or is that somebody else?
Uh, I think I'm here for questions, but along with the town manager. Yep. And, and just real briefly on the signs tonight, and, and my kind of involvement is just a lot of the signs that end up popping up around town, you know, that aren't permitted, are usually a business that doesn't know any better and wants to put out a sign. So we just wanted to kind of give you an update on how we're enforcing the sign code, and then I think Michael also has some other clarification questions. And, and again, you know, if the board, looking at the, the current sign code is in the, in the packets tonight, and if there's any interest in changing anything, we can do that at any time as well.
It looks way better, by the way.
Yeah, out on, on the road, so.
Yes.
So, yeah, just kind of a, an update on, on how we're kind of enforcing the code, just as it relates, not to the permitted signs, the nice permanent structure that you see in front of a business, but these are the ones that pop up, the disposable ones or the non-permanent ones, out along Main Street or Rogers Road. So we're just trying to get better about enforcing that. I've been reaching out and talking to businesses who I've noticed have these non-permitted signs, and, and having conversations with them about where they can put signs, where they can't, and what type of signs are allowed. And of course, the planning department serves as that resource. If you need a sign permit in town, there's a process, you apply. And so, you know, many of these signs are, are these yard signs, like I said, these disposable signs that pop up. And when it's a local business, I've been able to have those conversations, and they agree to take it down. A lot of times, though, it's these other outside entities that are just, you know, mattresses for sale for $300, or mosquitoes will take care of pressure washing your house. And so Public Works is going to be kind of going around periodically and trying to remove those as best we can as well, because those just keep, you know, we got to stay on it, those keep popping up every few weeks. But some of the concerns, I did want to mention, in, in just in talking to the business community, there are some businesses that are kind of set back away from the road, and so in speaking with some of them, where they don't feel they're noticed, and they feel they wanted to have some type of presence to catch the attention of drivers, catch the attention of customers driving by. So that's something, and, and Michael will get into that a little bit. If there's an interest in revising anything, or if we like it how it is, is right now, you know, to sometimes maybe allow for that, when it is kind of that temporary-looking sign, or, or, you know, a lot of times you see that feather sign or that wind sign, those are currently not allowed. And I think especially out there in the public right of way, nothing's allowed in the public right of way currently. But I think there's some wiggle room in the code now, depending on how you interpret if those, if we do wanted to allow those back up towards the building of a business. Right now, they're not allowed. So, but that, and that's just one concern I kind of heard in, in my conversations with businesses. So wanted to provide an update, just in case anybody gets a call or a business calls, "Hey, you know, why do I have to take down my sign?" Just wanted to let everybody know that we're kind of pursuing that effort. And then I'll turn it over to Michael, too, as maybe a little bit more education on the whole topic, and then go from there if there's any further questions or anything we want to do in terms of a text amendment to the sign code at a later date.
Sure. Are there any immediate questions? I'm going to roll through this. Just a real quick presentation of what the sign ordinance really is. It is Section 6.1 of the LDO. It is 24 pages long. 6.1.2 is a lengthy description of all the types of permitted signs that require a permit. And these are the typical things that you, you know, every new business gets, a wall sign, a monument sign out front, maybe one on the roof, a projecting sign, if you want to put signs on an awning over a window, all of those are described there and detailed there. They require a permit, and 99.9% of businesses successfully go through that process and get them and comply. Buried within 6.1.2 in capital N is the temporary sign section. And this is the list of temporary type signs that do require a permit. So you have to ask, do an application, get permission, get it issued, and then you can do those temporary forms. 6.1.5 is kind of reiterative, but it's all the permitted signs that require a permit. This has all the nice pictures in there and the examples, and you can kind of really see and look, you know, what, what does this intention mean? This also has all the details on the size, the limitation, things of that nature, if they have electrical lighting, things of that nature. So all the details are, are in there and in, under the permitted signs. So as you would expect, most of the 24 pages are describing you about the permitted signs, the ones you're allowed to do, and here's how they're described, and size and all that thing. The real bugaboo, and what we spend most of our time on, is the last two pages, which are the prohibited signs and the exempt type of signs. So prohibited is exactly that. You can't do these. And actually, earlier in the, in the section is the line, I think it's 6.1.2K, it's, it's called, the, its header is "Public Right Of Ways." Signs are prohibited within any public right of way except where the NCDOT or the Board of Commissioners has granted in writing, "Such encroachment pursuant to its regular procedures for reviewing and approving encroachments into a right of way." So that's the general rule of thumb. And most of the signs that you see and look like blight out there are in the public right of way. of way. So simply by location, they are prohibited. Doesn't say, doesn't matter what type, form, size, manner of construction, or temporary construction, because most of them are, as Michael used a good term, disposable. They're low investment, never picked up, et cetera, type of signs. So just by the location in the public right of way, that is, they are prohibited. Then this describes more the type or the distribution of them. And as you read these, you get the gist, right? You get the idea of what the intention of the signs are. But sometimes, something out there doesn't quite fit that, or two people look at the same words and don't agree. And that's where the LDA, the administrator of the LDO, has to make a determination. This is where, if the board sees some areas that they would like to clarify, that's a text amendment right there, to clarify some of these, or come up with any better way to either limit types of uses, signs, sorry, that are maybe not palatable anymore, or to say, I could see a loophole in that one. Let's write it this way, et cetera.
Sir, I have a quick question for you, because after reading that, I was trying to find anything to where if a new business come in town and want to get a different sign and make it digital, I didn't see anything in our LDO that we could adapt to that.
Let's do the, the exempt list, and let's see if the word digital's there. Great, great example. There's also usually language about movable type. Sometimes that's permitted, sometimes that's not. Sometimes it's, there's a rate of refresh on there. And I know that this property has a digital sign right out front, but you don't want fast-moving copy in front of eyes that are trying to dry. That is the recipe for, so there's, there's usually some regulations on that, too. Let's move to the exempt section, and we can always come back, of course. I had to split this onto two, yeah, two pages, sorry. So these are exempt, meaning they're permitted and they don't need a permit. So that's another where, you know, town staff does not know these signs are being erected, because you don't have to get a permit to do it. But they're permitted. This list is longer than the prohibited. Maybe that's a good thing, maybe that's not a good thing. It certainly creates more, wow, I drove by that business and I saw this sign. I now have to go back and vet whether it's permitted, prohibited, or meets the exempt. And I might have to go back and figure out where it is, et cetera, to determine if it's an exempt sign. And that's, of course, before the town seeks to maybe do enforcement on that sign, because you wouldn't want to enforce on a sign that's under the exempt list and you mistakenly thought it was a prohibited sign. So again, we don't need to get into all the minutia of these, but this is the introduction to the board about signs. And at your direction or at your interest level, you know, we can really get into this a little more and see, is this the set of sign regulations that the town wants? Again, going, going back to our earlier discussion, the board found that these were palatable four years ago. One piece of analysis I haven't done personally is compare this to the UDO, which was your ordinance for 18 years prior to the LDO, to see how much carryover was there, and if it was simply a matter of what was being permitted for signs under the UDO was satisfactory, hey, let's roll that forward with the LDO. Maybe with some modernization. But so these are generally small and/or otherwise types of protected signs, government signs. I think this one gets into, like, election political season, those types of signs are exempt and permitted. 13 is all about residential signs, so this gets into, think of, if you're doing a yard sale and things of that nature, you know, it spells it out, which is good. It's not just an omitted blind spot on types of signs. It actually gets into that. 14, human-held signs that do not obstruct the flow of vehicle or pedestrian. So that's exempt. So the sign spinner guy, I think if we had one of those, that would be permitted. Back to the not in a right of way, though, so he'd have to stand behind the right of way line on said property and do it. So just as one example. So these are, these are the things that, you know, we cumulatively look at, and every time we see a new sign or get a call about a sign, we vet it against, is it exempt? And so it's permitted, or is it prohibited? And always that location aspect, because we have main, two main corridors, Main Street, and then up the Rogers Road corridor where the businesses are, and that's where most of this visual signage really seems to occur. And one thing that's come to our knowledge recently in, in talking to the businesses, is visibility of signs relative to their places of business. They have the wall sign, they have the window signs, et cetera. They're on the marquee at the entrance, but when you drive by, there's all this lush vegetation screening you from seeing that. And that's actually a, you know, unintended consequence of buffer requirements from the past on some of these, and even some new developments, where we do have a streetscape buffer requirement. So that's, again, something that maybe the town wants to look at, lessening those streetscape things as a promoter of economic development and sign visuals. And if that were to happen, potentially some changes to the sign code that would naturally meet out some of those other sign types that are just rapidly occurring out there. I think if they went, if, if buildings had higher visibility, the extra steps that they're going to, small signs out front by the sidewalk, et cetera, might just naturally go away, because they had all the exposure that they could. That's more of a long-term site development consideration that gets into the minutia of, you know, site development, buffer yards.
Oh, we changed the height of vegetation years ago. It was limited now to a certain height, because I know out front here, it used to be extremely high. Now, it's, it's kind of cut back, but it may have grown back a lot. But I was thinking we came up with something that says you got, it wasn't as, you couldn't let it just grow, you know, 12 feet high in front of you.
I, I can look into that. I'm not sure. The darn thing with live things is they grow.
And I don't remember, it, it could have not, it could have been in the old one.
It might have been the UDO and not carried over as a consideration that that's potentially
Really, really, that, you're right. When we, we did it, I don't know if you, you're right, around Paul, I'm not sure. But, you know, it wasn't supposed to be number one, three or four foot high, that, that landscaping on the street, and not just grow up eight, 10 foot high.
Yeah. And that's a lot of landlord maintenance, obviously, and things of that. You know, nobody said you can't prune a tree, you can't prune the bushes. Now, if they were required by the code, you can't just remove them blanketly. I, I'd have to be out there telling them, you just removed your required buffer yard. But certainly, maintenance and working with things like visibility of, of the storefronts is, you know, that's just part of doing business.
Yeah. Maybe you drive up the street, I think I'm right on this. I go by it every day. But like Hardee's have little to no landscaping in front.
Yeah.
And then right next door, general, the general thing is just grown up like crazy.
Right.
You can't even see, you can't even see what's in the parking lot back there.
Right.
And they're side by side, and it looks awful being side by side, two different ways of doing.
Mayor Kern, can I ask them a question?
What?
Can I ask them a question?
Sure.
Mike and Mike, you guys put that big, long list in front of us, because there's some numbered item up there that you hate the way it is written. Tell us. Rather than us try to find the thing you hate the most, what do you hate on that list that we need to fix? Because it keeps coming up.
I think number 10. Attention flags.
Circled on my list.
Did I hit a thing?
No, it's great. What is an attention, I don't even know what an attention flag is.
Those feathered things that get ripped up.
Oh, well, we already prohibit wind signs, so that's already... Oh, you mean the, the guy?
On the air compressor thing that could potentially be viewed as...
But we don't want those, right? Or we do?
No.
We don't. So where we got the wind signs, we just get rid of 10, change that to reserved, and then write what we don't want. We don't want the wind signs. Those guys have a name. What are those called? No, 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 the dudes with the floppy arms.
Yeah, see, see, that's why, that's why we hear things change, and some to good and some to the bad. Because we, you told me the flag signs, there's ones that flow in the wind. We, we never, we never allowed those. I mean, they were not allowed at one time, because I remember, we had a new development, and we did a special one-year theme as a, as a, as a new business coming in.
Wind, wind signs are expressly prohibited. They are at number three. And also inflatable signs, so I don't know what 10 is doing, because...
Because I thought they, I thought they were prohibited.
So it's the same thing again? Well, we should strike that.
So it's just time for a fine? That's all?
So it's prohibited more than exempt, I don't know.
If you construe that feather banner, you know, as a wind sign, then clearly it's there. Again, like I said earlier, two people will view something differently, and of course, one person with an interest in it, and one person in a regulatory position are gonna view it differently. Omitting 10?
Let's just strike 10.
Perhaps give that person the argument point of, no, no, I'm an attention flag.
Unless it's a picture of what the, unless it's a picture of the
One, 10 to 10.
Wind feather flags, or whatever you're talking about.
Well, right, this code, like I said, in the permitted section earlier, it, it gives nice pictures and illustratives and examples to guide somebody doing a business. But this stuff here doesn't have good pictures. And again, we could augment that by pictures, examples of, you know, six means this, here's an image of it, et cetera. And, and hopefully give the LDA a lot more ammunition to enforce this without getting into the arguments, and we know where arguments typically go. So.
So I have one. Several years ago, we had a, I had a question about something, digital signs. We don't have any regulations on those at all right now. But my question is, I thought it was gonna be a bigger thing than it was. I mean, we have one business put in one, and we have the town put in ours, obviously. But are there regulations in other towns, other municipalities that, about, I don't know if it's the right terminology, maximum lumens, peak brightness on those?
Within a digital sign, I'm, I'm searching.
The answer, I don't know that we have anything, but it's highly regulated in other jurisdictions, and I've had many of those cases.
Because I feel like it's gonna look like Las Vegas if some, if it catches on. That's what I was worried about when it initially came in, that it was gonna just be out of hand, but.
Do you guys remember when Walgreens and CVS was opening up at every corner?
Yep.
I, I'd have a hearing every night where we tried to get the movable type milk for whatever, and it would change.
Right.
And a lot of towns in North Carolina prohibited movable type, and then digital movable type was clearly going to drive crime and whatever. I mean, it was, it was seen as the end of the world if that happened. So, so it would, it would be heavily negotiated as, as Mike was referencing.
Right here on page three and four, again, in that first section of the code where it really gets into this, a lot of the specifics, E is illumination and F is changeable copy. So it kind of gets at those two things. Changeable, changeable copy has, yeah, message must remain static for at least 10 seconds. And there's another, and then internal illumination, signs shall not exceed .2-foot candles at the property line, so the amount of light that it gives off. Yes, there are standards in there. And again, under, under a typical, you know, ground-mounted sign that a permanent business is, is doing a sign permit for, all of that is vetted and reviewed.
Okay.
Again, that's the easy stuff.
Right.
Does our, does our sign comply with the 0.2-foot candles? Because that, that sucker's at the road, and it is bright.
Might have to change that.
I, I park, I park over there, and I have to wait for my eyes to adjust so I can see the street again.
Yeah. So, okay, I think I've heard some initiative for, in the prohibited and some exempt, do a little work there, come back with some suggestions on text amendments for that. Would that sound open to the board?
Sure.
If you're open to suggestions, one more to at least look at is, I think, is 6.1.2N3. The special event signs.
Okay.
Limited to 14 days instead of 30.
That's on page seven.
Yes.
Permits for such banners or signs shall be limited to 30 days and no more than three times each year. Any such banners should, uh, did it 10 days after the, okay. What was the suggestion?
14 days instead of 30.
14 days?
If you have a special event, you're not gonna be doing it 30 days in advance.
Um, some of them you will.
Like?
Like the barbecue. So I'm just thinking out loud. So I know when I was there, it took a lot of effort to put up those signs. And then people passing by aren't always gonna see it. So I'm not saying I don't, I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
But I would just want to look at the marketing on that.
But you could also get an exemption, right? If we need a longer time, you could get exemption for
Good idea.
If it's an event, yeah. That way you hold it to a minimum, and then ask for an exemption if you need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the big community ones.
Yeah.
Would you like, how would that exemption work? Would you want them to come to the board?
Yeah.
As an administrative item?
Yeah, and maybe exemption.
It comes to the board for them to exercise their, so you'd have to exercise content-neutral judgment on it. So the, that can be tough, right? So the fact, the, the message can't be what you're judging, or, or whether you like the event, or, see what I mean? That's kind of the...
I think our, our thing was some of them, it takes a long time to put up.
Yeah, if you made it on the base, content neutral, you're judging it based upon, look, we just need more time. And that could really happen. Raleigh used to do it during public comment period. You would just do it then. It was the same thing you used if you needed to do a block party and close a street. You just, you just kind of did it during public comment period.
So that used to be an application process.
Mm-hmm. I think the instruction is let staff look into it and bring something back.
Yeah. I liked your idea, too. Staff, you see this every day, like, all the problems are else. Like, if you guys have problems with it, let us know. And that makes it easier than, because we're not gonna think of everything you're getting in trouble with every day.
Right.
So, yeah, if you have problems, let us know, and then we can work with you for that.
Okay.
I think one other question that's come up is, too, looking at, you know, places that maybe have, businesses that have a lot of vendors inside, or maybe coworking spaces, so you have five or six businesses, but it's really one location. I think our code kind of just limits one sign per business right now. So...
Page five, the top, capital I, total number of signs. A total of three signs may be permitted per business.
Okay.
And...
And that's, that's what we have doing for, that's the basis on most new business
Yeah, because what you're talking about, you know, you have one that might have six or seven, but you got two of them up on the corner, combined two locations have 100 vendors.
Right.
So then we're littering the street again.
Right.
So it really doesn't work.
Yeah.
So we have to be concerned about that.
Because these, these big, like, the place in Wake Forest has all those vendors in there. Every one of them can't put a sign up.
There, there are 20 tenants in my office building in downtown Raleigh, and there's only two people who are on the building. And it still works.
I think we could write something to clarify subleases or something to that effect, do not have sign rights to the property. We've, we've bannered some language around.
Good.
We can think of that. The other, so I'm glad we got into this, because it is, it does say per business. So if there's a business that has multiple buildings with lots of facing frontages, they only get three, because it says per business. Is this something that maybe the board wants to change that to per building, or some other ratio of, of size and equity? Think of a building that's
So if we had...
Sided with four roads around it.
If we had five pizza joints owned by the same company, they could only have three signs for five buildings?
If they were operating the, the business, the one company out of five different buildings on a site, I think I'd need to interpret that as your one business.
Like if there were five different pizza joints, five different buildings, all by the same corporate entity?
Uh, if they were in their own suites, Domino's here and Pizza Hut there, but...
No, it would be Domino's, 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 Domino's.
Okay, okay. Then yes.
That's what you're talking about. So if they had five buildings, they'd only have three signs.
Another good point. This code does not apply itself very well to multi-tenant buildings, where maybe you are leasing only 20 feet of frontage, and you get, the standard is three per business. Some businesses can't even exercise the three, at least where you'd want to put a sign, visibility-wise.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of modern inequities, I would say, or describe it as that, to the, to the code, as we try to make it work for different types of businesses. The Rogers Road buildings, where you have smaller suites there.
And a marquee.
Yeah. Well, and marquee is held differently. There's a, there's a, there is a standard for a standalone monument sign, but as far as the businesses itself. But again, I operate my business out of three buildings, you get three signs. I, I operate out of 20-foot wide, you get three signs. That's what I'm getting at, is that perhaps the equitable, or is there something more, more rational to give bigger businesses, bigger buildings, multiple building sites, more signage? I mean, if, if that seems like something that you'd like to see in a written, or maybe some other better examples of what I'm, what I'm talking about. We haven't had one, obviously, that's been a massive problem, or else you would, you would be aware of it, where someone was saying... where someone was saying, I need a lot more than three signs. And again, the size of the signs then is predictive, and this is a very large building, and you're only giving me six by 32, or six by eight, you know, 32 square foot or something like that. Okay.
And I think if you notice anything, or as you're looking at this over the next couple of weeks and anything jumps out at you, just let us know. Start working on a change or something.
I think we heard it. If we're seeing some problems, at, at least bring it to their attention and give some tangible...
So, so are you starting enforcing, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, we're, we're kind of doing the, um, what is it? Honey catches flies better than a... So it's kind of the, you know, I'm, I'm going out in the community and talking with them. And 90% of the time, everybody's amiable and understands. Some are just upset that they had to put some signs back. So I'm kind of doing that with the ones that are local here. And then that harder job is kind of just all the time monitoring because every new week, something pops up on the side of the road from somebody in Raleigh or outside of town. It's just making sure we're getting on that.
Those are easy, just pull them up.
Yeah, yeah, if anybody sees them out there, just drive them by, right?
And just, and just as you walk, going away on this, have you looked at other emerging cities that have signage, uh, language that you could also help adopt? Will help some powerfully ideation for you?
We haven't had, I haven't done a deep dive into that analysis of, you know, side by side.
I think it would be beneficial, so that way it takes some of your angst away in some areas.
We certainly don't want to be a Lone Ranger.
Right, right.
In eliminating something that's, that's, uh, there, but certainly, yeah. But, you know, our main street, as we said earlier, is very unique. It's converting from an older main through street, through, through road. That's nearly an interstate to our main street.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Who's, who's discussing the Rosewood Chamber of Commerce?
I could let Mike, I could let Mike and Mike rest their feet on that one. So, as you know, we've been working through finalizing our MOU with the Chamber of Commerce. Throughout that, throughout the time, over the last few months, you've all had questions about it. One thing that I did, we've been doing, we have done is, this past Thursday, we met with the Chamber, myself and Michael McFarland. And what we found out was that that's the first time that we've ever formally sat down and met with them as far as the Chamber and the board. And so it was a very, very productive meeting. Yeah, that has not happened before, that was actually a first. Despite our continued to work, despite our working together over the years, having a formal sit down with the, with the town, town leadership, economic development, their executive director and the board was first. So we were able to talk through several things through, through the meeting. One thing that I provided to you all via email is just looking at the different questions that you all had asked us, asked them directly through prior presentations, and also, and also communicated through us to them. The FAQ, I provided that to you for you to read. We can talk through those if you'd like. But the most important thing we wanted to do was, we had in, kind of in our last meeting, an informal presentation of the executive, the new, the executive director for the Chamber of Commerce. And so we just wanted to give an opportunity for you to ask any questions or just have any open conversation in regard, with regards to the MOU. I know that, that with the MOU, the language, we've generally come to full agreement on it as far as from a legal standpoint. But we've just been working through the language around how we present the intent of how the funds will be committed and the amount in which they will be committed with that. We made some changes in our approach to the MOU as far as simplifying it. And so we know in past iterations of the MOU, we had all 10, all 10 different line items that were there. And so over the, this past budget year, we've been looking at better aligning with North Carolina general statutes and the use of funds. And, and so we've pivoted when it come to the more, the fundraising events. And instead of looking at it as something that we're funding, it's something that we, as a town, are partnering with them to be a title sponsor on one of those things, being something they put a lot of effort into, the barbecue and bands festival. And then also there, there may be other events that we do as well. Perhaps the Christmas parade. And so we'll be a sponsor for that. And so we'll continue to sponsor those things outside of the MOU. But the main thing we wanted to do was bring those questions to you around what the launch for Roosevelt program is, and also clarification around the economic development programming and their intentions on that. And if you look at the email that we provided to you, it does list those, several different points of emphasis that we, that there will be carrying as far as defining the, the different things that those, that, that line item supports. And also highlight some of the initiatives that, that we doing over this year that those, that funding will be committed to. And so the goal was to bring this information to you and then also just provide for, provide a, an opening to have general discussion or for your questions to be answered. And so we can continue working to move that MOU forward with them. Could you feel free to step up if you'd like?
Yeah.
Steve?
I'm just here for questions. If you guys have any.
In all fairness, I did not see the email before I came because I believe it came at 3 something or another. So I have not had a chance to look at this.
And that was completely on us. I wanted to do as much research as possible and prepare as much information as possible. He emailed us actually last week and requested the information. But I quite frankly took my time. I wanted to make sure that everything was good with the 501(c)(3) and where that stood and all of our statuses before I responded. And so when I responded to him, I responded in red to add some of our initiatives that we're putting in place. So you guys will have that information.
So are we ready to put this on the calendar for consideration?
Uh, yes.
You want to do that first of next month?
Yes, I would do that, yeah.
All right. Have we all seen the final draft of the UDO?
Um, we, we provided it to you, we can send it to you again. It's, it's been cleaned up, it's simplified a bit. And so we can send that out to you again for you to review.
Let's send, let's make sure before we, we consider it, we all see what the final, and maybe send it a few days early.
Yes. We can, we can send it out, we can send it out tomorrow. It's not a big deal, yeah.
I'd like to see the final draft, and then we'll consider it next month.
Yeah, the, yeah. And when y'all reviewed it before, your main questions are about the amount of the funding, what it'll be committed to, and we just want to make sure we, we got that to you.
Yeah.
One point of question for the special use for our alcohol. Is that going to be part of that?
That, that'll be on consent for the first meeting. June is gonna be bringing, they'll be bringing it before, that'd be on consent agenda for the first meeting of next month, and so we're taking care of that. The special use permit for alcohol for, for the barbecue and bands festival.
And where is that, where is that S over at the school?
No, we're gonna be at the park this year.
It'd be a reference place park. And Malcolm can elaborate, but they, the, you can elaborate on the layout and things of that nature?
It's basically gonna be a similar layout to what you guys did for July 4th. Last year when we were behind the school, we had about 13 vendors total. Right now, we're sitting over 100 vendors. So we have close to 100 non-food vendors and about 20 food trucks. So a lot bigger, our marketing plan is a lot bigger. We've got a multitude of acts, national recording artists coming in from all over. So it's gonna be...
We, we closing the street?
Absolutely. We actually finalized the, the drawing for the street to be closed in our request, in, in the partnership. The budget for the police kind of sent us over, so we were, we were asking, could you guys kind of partner with us, with the, with the police department? But we're gonna do 10 officers. That, those 10 officers will also act for our alcohol. So 10 officers for, officers for the street closure will also serve for us having alcohol in sight. And then we, we've drawn up a comprehensive plan. We're gonna make a couple of adjustments to it. We've requested a mobile command center and all of that to make sure that we were properly secured and making sure we have proper lines of egress, but yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, and that, that, that request will be updated in the MOU. So one thing that was, has always historically been included in MOU was those, the additional support that we provide to certain events with them. It was the, like the Christmas parade, and this will be added in that as well. We're working through, we'll work through what that looks like practically with PD and those things of that nature. And if, if it's for, I don't know the right term, off duty. If it's for off duty time or what have you, and if it's just something that we put out an open call to by leveraging partnerships to PD, or if it's something that will be for our police officers themselves. I know we handle the police, we handle 4th of July and the Christmas parade a certain way, but we'll just work, we'll work through that tactically with the police department. And then we'll make sure it's reflected in the MOU. And then it'll be ultimately reflected in the funding from the economic development line item that goes towards supporting economic development initiatives. And so it won't be coming from the pot, from like salaries and overtime from here. It'd be done from economic development.
Okay, so it, it would be partnership with the Chamber?
Yes.
To the PD to provide service, but for the town, it'd be us doing that as a sponsorship?
Yes, yeah, we'll be providing that support from, from the position of a sponsor and partner, yes.
Okay.
And then two things, one, we're still following, you know, proper procedures. So we did put in our application, it did come back to us today that, that our police, off duty police were approved. Also, on the backend of the event this year, you will actually get an economic impact report, which is gonna be very important because it'll show you what businesses benefited from the event being here, whether it's, you know, gas stations, if, you know, we had more hotels, whatever the case may be. Because that helps you understand what an event really does for your area, so.
Good, thank you. You got, you got your social media back up and going?
We're wide open.
Ken, you, you mind putting out some words for the 9/11 event coming up?
We are, actually, I spoke to him last week. I, I dug right in, he, he sent a call through the school, and then I got with him. He and I spoke for about an hour.
Well, good.
He's very excited, so we're gonna, we're gonna give him all the support we can.
That's good. It's gonna be a good program, just get it out to your, your business owners.
We'll be there, we'll be there for sure.
Malcolm, one, are the tax returns being worked on to get resubmitted?
We are, we are. I'm, I'm, our accountant, accounting firm, we sat down. We also like, because of the gap between myself and the previous administration, we had a gap in billing too. So we're doing two things. One, cleaning everything up in terms of that side of the books. And in the front end, we're adding this software called GluUp that will help us keep better track of our, not just our finances, but our members as well.
Great, thank you, thank you. Good job, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, I think our attorney has asked for a closed session. Does anyone? Paul, you have?
Yeah, I have it. I move that the board go into closed session and consult the town attorney, reserve attorney of client privilege pursuant to chapter 143, section 318 dot 1183 of North Carolina general statutes. The board expects to receive information regarding the town of Rosewood versus Edens Family LLC, eminent domain matters.
I have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Not hearing any, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, sound as if the ayes have it, any ayes do have it. So we are going to recess into closed session, and we will come back into open session after we've finished business in closed session. after we've finished business in closed session.
Okay, we spent a little time in executive session. We back open in open session. We close out tonight. There's nothing else to report from my end. Just want to remind everybody of the 9/11 event coming up. And is it any final comments from attorney? I know we went into closed session, attorney or?
The only comment with regard to the closed session would be to note that due to a conflict of interest, Commissioner Paul was excused from the closed session for the remainder of the evening.
I understand. Any comment, Eric?
Not regards closed session, no.
Okay. Any comments before we adjourn or anything?
We had a just two quick things. We had a very successful event at Chili King. Our conversations with our civil servants and the community. It's a very great event. We had about 46, 47 free meals given out. And but more than that, people just patron coming in. I believe that the business owner felt very supported and very honored for the time they had there. And so that was just a really good event when I mentioned that. Also to the community to be on the lookout for you mentioned the 9/11 event. And so advertisements for that and then advertising for the upcoming barbecue events as well. And then personally, just wanted to inform you all, I was accepted to fellowship leadership North Carolina. It's a very prestigious statewide fellowship that I'll be participating in over the next nine months and be collaborating with public and private sector leaders. It's stuff that's very targeted to expanding my awareness and resources, more importantly, resources and connections within the state to help solve some of the problems that we may face in our region to collaborate to do those. And so I'm looking forward to that. And so thanks in it. Thank you all for your your support. I'll be bringing it to bring give me more information about that, Mr. Mayor. It shouldn't be impacting my schedule. I'm gonna will impact my availability one week a month for like two or three days. And I'll be taking on the cost of personally for some parts of it, but in general, looking for look for the leveraging those resources to help us find alternative funding resources and also help tackle some of the issues that are facing our community here. And so that's one of the things that's coming up. But outside of that, everything else is going pretty well. I'll be sending out an update with you all on some other different other things via email.
All right. Thank you. Any closing comments from board? All right. Thank you, board. Thank you staff, Stephen, Eric. Thank you for your work and good meeting tonight. So thank you, Christina. To express, I thought we had a good work session, learned a lot. So appreciate all that. Do you want to add?
Just to say, just to remind you, if any of you are available tomorrow, we're having an expo for seniors as well. We have about 40 vendors. If they turn out as well, feel free to stop by.
Yeah, that that wouldn't be no, that was at the church. It's a Roswell Baptist Church in the gymnasium. I think it starts at 11:00. So expo for seniors. If you're a senior citizen, you go in there, you find out all the vendors and all the people that can do things for you and service Houston. It's a good it's a good call. It's a good event. So appreciate you bringing that up. I didn't mention it earlier. So thank you. Anything else? All right. So without any opposition, we are going to adjourn for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.